Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Cupertino-Sunnyvale Coffee Hour. A monthly chat with Leaguers and others who are interested in the work that we do. Today, we are so pleased to have Tara Srikrishnan, Santa Clara County Board of Education, trustee of Area Two, representing over 250,000 people in areas of Cupertino, Los Gatos, Saratoga, and parts of Sunnyvale. Tara is a product of Cupertino and a League member. She brings professional experience across every level of local government, city, county, and state. She is a member of the Strong Start Coalition, which works to strengthen early care, health, and education for newborns and children up to eight across Santa Clara County. And she's going to share information about the County Board of Education, which we really don't hear much about, and I think it's really important that we learn more of what they do. And she'll share some of her experiences and challenges. If you have any questions as we go through it, just enter them in the chat. And I'm going to now turn this over to Tara.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that introduction and for the League for hosting this discussion. Because as you said, the County Board plays a really critical role in serving our students and being an ally to our youth. And it's great to share and educate people on the work that we do. So I have a presentation I'll share. So these are our current members of the Board of Education. You know, we're proud, we have not only a diverse board in terms of our backgrounds, but also our professional backgrounds. Our president this year is trustee Vicky Chan, who's a teacher and has organized teachers. Myself, I'm vice president. I've worked with students and organized students. We have trustee Berta, who comes from special education. Trustee Laurie is the county health commissioner. Trustee Ma was a parent leader and PTA leader. Trustee DeSalvos, a professor, former administrator. And trustee Roche is a local school district, a school board member, and a coach, a sports coach, and former city council member. So we have a diverse board. We made history this year with three South Asian women, which I think is the first for any governing board I've seen. We're a majority API women, and so we're really proud to reflect the diversity in our county. So the County Board of Education is an elected body and an appellate body. And we have special duties that no other body in our county has in matters of concern to youth and families, including inter-district transfer appeals, expulsion appeals, and charter school appeals from local school districts. And I'd say our entire board is really invested and focused on giving students second chances. And so I've really seen how the board shapes the lives of our students and really serves them and, you know, I'd say changes their lives and long-term outcomes. So we're a collaborative body. We set policy, provide leadership and advocacy in the entrance of public education. And again, we're a strong ally for our youth. And if you think about the California's K-12 education system, there are 58 county offices of education across the state. We're regional service agencies for schools across the state. And I'd say we fall under the State Board of Education, the governing body for the Department of Education and between local school districts. And some fun facts for you, California has over 1,000 school districts. There are over 10,500 public schools and over 300,000 teachers serving California's 6.2 million public school students. And in our own county, this next slide sort of reflects the diversity of our own county students. The County Office of Education is charged with serving over 270,000 public school students across the county's over 30 school districts. So the County Office of Education has been providing these resources for over 160 years. And they lead by our four pillars at the County Office: Equity, Diversion, Inclusion, and Partnership, which are the same pillars I lead by in my service. So, and I know that the League does as well. And we appreciate your partnership at the County Office because we certainly can't do it alone. So again, we're a regional government agency. We have an appointed constitutional officer, our county superintendent of schools, Dr. Mary Ann Dewan. So the County Office provides business services, professional development for educators, instructional support, and more for our public schools. And we also operate our own county programs. So these are for youth from their very early age, you know, infant toddlers to the age of 24. And they include special education, early education, that includes Head Start, early Head Start, migrant education for children and migratory workers, also alternative education with our justice-involved youth. We have court and community schools. And overall, our County Office of Education budget is over $308 million to fund these programs. And over the past couple of years, through the Stronger Together initiative, the County Office played a leadership role in providing support for schools during COVID-19 as we rebuild and recover and reopen. So I'm really proud of the work that we've done in that regard. And we took the steps to access state and federal funding that was available to us to really help our schools recover. And so I'm proud we have a responsible budget, a balanced budget, and we take that very seriously to ensure we can maintain our programs with very high quality. So our students can have high-quality learning experiences. And at our last Board Priority Setting meeting, we laid out our Board priorities, which I'm going to touch on later, but they are systemic change in educational justice, empowering child wellness, environmental and STEM literacy, and student engagement, expanded early learning, and diversifying the early childhood education workforce, advocating for increased funding for public education, and lastly, digital equity and literacy. So I thought I'd share a bit about my own education and background. As was mentioned, I am a product of CUSD and FUHSD, K-12, and very proud product of the schools and trustee area two. My mom was a classified employee at CUSD, so I always say my work in public education started with her. You know, volunteering at our school libraries or during the summer getting, helping our teachers set up their classrooms. So was very lucky to have the best role model of my mother. And the values of public education and especially the importance of education for women across the globe and how that can empower women to succeed and further themselves. And I, another aspect of my background, I helped co-found a nonprofit when we just earned our 501(c)(3) status, Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action, that empowers and engages students in the environmental sciences and empowers them to be policymakers and changemakers and advocates and everything that I see in our League members as well. And the next slide, this is the picture of SBYCA's summit last year, our Youth Leadership Summit. And so we work with students across the county. We have city action teams, including the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team and a Sunnyvale Youth Climate Action Team in our area. So they have, you know, spoken on the news. They've given talks at big tech companies. They've done career trips, their own candidate forums, taking inspiration from the League. And specifically in relationship to schools, they've led environmental education efforts and actually created curriculum and climate advisories that were shared throughout Fremont Union High School District, for instance. And they've even led efforts to get rid of plastic utensils and do composting. And they just stood up a Student Sustainability Commission at FUHSD, which is exciting. And I share that to, to share that, you know, a lot of that work pushed me and some of the students pushed me to apply for a vacancy on our Board of Education. This is about a year and a half ago. And so I'm happy that a lot of the priorities I'll be talking about later around environmental sustainability in our County Office really started with a lot of the students that are on the screen right now. So just have my last slide, just about me. As was mentioned, I have worked at the city, county, and state and now work for State Senator Dave Cortezzi, that who represents much of the county. Of course, my issue areas are K-12 education and sustainability and have worked on advocacy campaigns and have made sure that students have been involved every step of the way, so they can engage in the political process as well. So the first priority that I wanted to discuss from the County Office is student mental health and school-based support systems for students. You know, we're really looking at serving the whole child, especially coming out of the pandemic. This has been a priority statewide in K-12 education. And mental health has been a growing concern even before distance learning. You know, the suicide rate is up, calls to emergency hotlines for youth is up. And one study I found, found that one in five high school students considered suicide in the 12 months post-pandemic. You can think right after distance learning. So I'm really proud of the way we've evolved in serving our students in terms of looking at their mental health. We've boosted our hiring of mental health professionals. And so far, we've created 12 wellness centers operated by the County Office across school sites across the county. We've secured state and federal funding, including through the Mental Health Student Services Act. And so we've been partnering with our local school districts to stand up these wellness centers with the hope of providing a wellness center at each school site. So one recent survey from one of the wellness centers found that 700 students visited that one center in its first week. And exit surveys showed very positive outcomes for the students after their visit. So this, these slides here come from a white paper the County Office recently released called "The Efficacy of a School-Based Approach to Student Wellness" that found that students are 10 to 21 times more likely to receive behavioral health services when they are provided on a school campus. So, yeah, so you'll see more coming out of our office in terms of mental health. We also have a student advisory group, our Student Wellness Advisory Group, or SWAG, that because we're really focused on having, making sure students have a voice in the services that are provided to them. So the next few slides, I get to talk about environmental education, which I touched on earlier. And so this is my personal passion for the Board and have been really excited to see the way we're expanding these efforts. So one of the, one of our programs is Walden West, our environmental education program that the County Office has been operating for over 70 years. And we do have an ACA accreditation, an American Camping Association accreditation. So these, our outdoor science school provides outdoor and garden-based programming. And we serve over 12,000 students annually during the school year through Walden West. And I'm really proud of the fact that even during the pandemic, we were able to keep our environmental education program because there were county offices and districts that had to cut environmental education. And so I'm glad that we were able to, to keep ours. We've also, through Dr. Delafruze Williams, have been leading the Growing Gardens Survey. And this, the Growing Gardens Project is a survey of school sites to support outdoor and nature-based learning. Recently, we partnered with Our City Forest, a nonprofit I'm sure you're aware of, to plant trees across and near school sites. So we have a community practice that involves community-based partners and teachers about the importance of outdoor and garden-based education. We also launched the Environmental Literacy Leadership Collaborative. And this is a network of educators and organizations and students, as you can see, that, that are working to expand environmental literacy, climate action, green, green schools and green buildings across the county. I was able to lead a resolution in, in front of our Board that we passed unanimously to further these efforts, which is exciting. We collaborated, the County Office has a new environmental literacy website, which you can check out. This year, we released a Climate Action Week educator guide with resources for educators who want to teach about climate justice, transportation, food waste conservation, greening school campuses. So I'm excited to continue to collaborate, to further these efforts, to provide hands-on learning opportunities for students because I know how vital that is. We also, this was pretty historic and exciting. Last year, we hosted our first annual Environmental Literacy Summit hosted by the County Office of Education. And last year's summit was actually in partnership with Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. So on March 18th, we're hosting our second annual Environmental Literacy Summit. So I would encourage you to join us. It'll be in person at the County Office. We'll hear from expert speakers. We'll share resources. We'll hear from administrators as well as students. And some session topics for this year include action and advocacy in the community, cultivating green and sustainable campuses, school gardens for health and education, inclusive environmental literacy education, indigenous knowledge and land-based pedagogy, climate action and education, and green career pathways. So next, I wanted to talk about our Power of Democracy Initiative, which is a civic engagement initiative at the County Office of Education. And along with the League, civic engagement, especially for our young people, is a priority for the County Office. So we, through the Power of Democracy, partner with teachers and school districts to strengthen professional support and opportunities for students to take part meaningfully in the political process. So one highlight in that regard is this past year, we welcomed our first student board member on the County, on the County Board of Education, which was very exciting. So the students in our court and community schools actually shared a petition and signed a petition. And we had our first student board member, which I think is so critical, and I'm extremely proud of the students, student board member and alternate board member that joined our Board. And I remember our student board member said, "Youth are voices for change." And our alternate board member stated, "It's important for us, youth voices to be heard, especially in education." So then their engagement and collaboration on our Board has been very rewarding. So I wanted to also discuss our early learning initiatives. You know, as you both know, we have our Strong Start Coalition at the County Office of Education. And we know what a critical role that early learning plays, especially in closing our achievement gap, which still exists in our county. And we've seen the improved social-emotional development as well as academic outcomes for students that have that early learning benefit. And thankfully, there's been more funding from the state for early learning. That's been pretty historic. So now through Strong Start and, and other, we're focused on making sure we have adequate facilities, making sure we have that pipeline and retention in our early learning workforce, which is super vital, and really fully implementing our universal TK transition, which is happening statewide. So we have the Early Learning Steps to Success Program. So parents can find information from infant toddler to preschool programs through our referral page. You can learn about early Head Start, Head Start, our state preschool programs. And this is the link to our childcare resource and referral line. And we just hope to strengthen and provide public education on the importance of early learning and provide those universal resources. And in our next slide, this was a partnership with the Silicon Valley Passport Rotary Club at our county's Head Start preschool programs at all of the sites across the county. They were able to distribute backpacks and supplies to all of our early learners in those programs at the beginning of this school year. And so those, you can see the backpacks were filled with all sorts of supplies. And they got to distribute those to the families, and that was very rewarding. So again, partnership is so important to us. And we had some generous donations from that Passport Rotary Club, so a big thank you to them. And another initiative at our, that's a county-wide initiative, is to support arts education, which is called Artspiration. And so we're, we're, it's, it's again, professional development for pre-K through 12 classrooms. We get to hear from art specialists. There are workshops, programs, lesson plan templates, you know, an online lesson bank. And there's some great statistics that I like to share because arts education is linked to higher test scores across all subjects. And students with arts education are five times less likely to drop out of school, four times more likely to be recognized for academic achievement, three times more likely to be elected to class office, four times more likely to receive a bachelor's degree, two times more likely to graduate from college, and 30% more inclined to pursue a professional career. So, you know, I've seen firsthand how studying the arts in school can help a student develop their work ethic, study habits, problem-solving abilities. So this is just another initiative that shows how arts can build and help unify communities. So the last initiative from the County Office I wanted to end on is the My Name, My Identity Campaign, which the County Office launched in partnership with the National Association for Bilingual Education. So this is a campaign to share cultural identities, to share backgrounds, and to share, to make sure we're respecting everyone's backgrounds in the classroom and in our education community. So often, not only in the classroom do students do my name, my identity, but also in some of our meetings and roundtable discussions, we start with our my name, my identity. So I'll go, I'll give my name and my identity. So my name is Tara, and so Tara in Hindi means star. And one thing special about my name is my parents', my legal name's actually Utara, which is a Hindi word, and, but no one's ever called me that. My parents, since day one, have called me Tara. And so what they were thinking is Utara actually means north. So they thought that would, that my name would be North Star. So that's the meaning behind my name in Hindi. So my name, my identity is when you share your name and a bit about the meaning behind your name to build a respectful and caring school culture. So thank you so much. I've left my email here. I'm happy to answer any questions. And, you know, we really see schools as centers of community and centers of resilience. And again, partnership's so important to us, so I value your partnership, and I'm here to be a partner to you. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Tara. That was fascinating. All those, all those, I, I had no idea that the County Board of Education was into all of those areas. I, I have some questions. Roberta, do you have any questions?
Oh, I have a lot of observations about how we can use some of this information. It's just fascinating. I really liked the part about the arts. I really was interested in all the statistics you gave about how arts helps students, because I've always felt that that was, you know, something, especially learning to practice. But anyway, thank you so much. I'm really interested in this. And, and I'm going to be talking to Marie Anne about some things that came to mind.
I, I, I have some specific questions about some of the things you talked about. The Artspiration Program, is that, what levels is that offered at in the school system?
Yeah, so it's, it's to support arts for pre-K through 12. You know, even in our own county programs, our LCAP, we really have a focus on arts and music education in our special education programs and our alternative education programs. So it's, it's, it's for professional development across all pre-K through 12.
Okay, because I know, when reading that, the funding for the arts teachers has kind of gone away in some areas. So that, that is, I think, I personally have an interest in art. I studied art for some time. And even though I moved into science, so I, I know how valuable that is to students and how that can expand their participation in school and in learning.
Yeah, and you know, part of Artspiration is a focus on equity, you know, to ensure access for students across the county. And I have, as you saw in one of the slides, I was a music instructor as well at a private academy in Cupertino. So I definitely value, value that studying the arts in school and have been personally benefited by my own arts education. So I can definitely, I can definitely second those, those feelings.
Yeah, and the, the other thing is the focus on the environmental education. The programs that you showed look like they are getting children involved in actually planting and harvesting. Is that, is that the case?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's the intent behind growing gardens and, and working with school districts to grow their gardens at their school sites. And a lot of that work is being led by Dr. Delafruze Williams, who is an expert in this field. And in partnership with Our City Forest, the County Office of Sustainability. So that's certainly, that type of hands-on learning is something we're really trying to expand.
Okay. And what, you went through the programs. Do you have any, are there any challenges that the County Board of Education has that they're, they're dealing with?
Yeah, you know, we, I'm thinking about our meeting yesterday. But, you know, one of the roles, we have certain governance roles and also oversight roles for the county, county authorized schools, because we're an appellate body for charter school appeals. So, you know, sometimes what can So you know, sometimes what can get tricky and especially for the public is. The roles we can and can't play in governance for county authorized schools. In terms of getting involved in direct day-to-day operations. Um, so especially with school funding, there are schools that. Um, we're, we have a school in North Sunnyvale, which um. It's just a current, current um example that has some structural deficit and fiscal challenges they've been dealing with. Um, and you know, this, we're flat-funded as a county office of education, that's another issue, we can't go out for a bond, right? Like local school districts, so. Um, you know, although we do have a balanced budget, which I'm very proud of, there. I'd say one of our biggest challenges is um. Is, is. You know, whether it's facilities issues that come up or budget issues that come up with. Uh, county-approved authorized uh schools, and this is a school that was authorized ten years ago by the county board. Um, that their board, their, it's, it's a nonprofit board for their charter school is, um. You know, they're leaning towards a voluntary closure of that school. So that's very challenging, it's gonna impact six, over six hundred fifty students. Um, so we're, you know, providing technical assistance where we can, although there's a limitation in ed code of what we can and can't do. Um, so that's, those are some of the challenges that come up.
And welcome Pam. Pam, Pam is one of our board members, and she is a resident of Sunnyvale. And she was mentioning the other day that some of the issues with schools. Yeah, I, I think they were related to equity issues, is that right Pam?
Uh, yeah, so I, um. Hi Tara, um, nice to meet you, I didn't get to meet you on Saturday, I've, there were lots of people, um. And I was handling a lot of the technical stuff, and I apologize for being late, I was um attending to some family issues, but um, I'm. It's great to meet you, I am a Sunnyvale resident, um. And uh I know Sunnyvale, uh and you know, there's a, there's a citizen who's um. Sort of mobilizing about uh access to high schools um for residents of North Sunnyvale. Um, so I don't know if you had a chance to meet with, or speak with her first uh during the meeting on Saturday.
Yeah, and that's definitely an issue that um a lot of people, I've talked to a lot of people about in Sunnyvale. Um, and that gets to what we were talking about on our board, because the school closure that. Um, is being considered is in North Sunnyvale, right, and it's a middle school and high school, so that only um. That only furthers that lack of access in that area, right, it's, it was really critical. It is really a critical resource that students and families have depend, have depended on, so.
Yeah, and it was, I mean, and it's a charter, that's a, you know, I know that that, there's a charter school, but it's also within our. Traditional public school offerings, right, there's sort of, a lot of those kids have to travel far to get to their assigned high school. Um, you know, it just makes it complicated. Anyway, I didn't wanna, you know, I just, um. Uh, I know you're, you're here representing a broad range of issues, so I don't wanna get us too, too deep into that one, uh.
Well, well, since we're recording this, Pam, you can watch it later. But the, the presentation that Tara did was really excellent and covered a enormous amount of ground. Um. There's a lot of conversation about um. Potential restriction of materials related to equity and racism, et cetera. Um, and I know our area has been accused of being very woke. Uh, do, do you, does your board uh address any of that or have any issues with that?
Yeah, well, um, this was actually bef- right before I joined the board, um, uh. But I was fully in support of, um, we, the county, it started with the county board. Passing a resolution in support of ethnic studies, um and you know statewide, we passed AB one oh one. Um, and so we were one of the first county offices to form a task force around ethnic studies. Um, with leaders across the county to support schools in implementing that new state law. Um, which obviously made ethnic studies a high school uh graduation requirement, so um. We did play a role in that regard in terms of setting policy um and being a service agency, so. Um, and that was right before I joined the board, but I do know there were, there were, um, there were. It, I wouldn't say it was a contentious issue, but different, people had different opinions. Um, uh, although the, the board overwhelmingly, you know, supported that resolution.
Okay, are there any other questions that uh we might pose to uh Tara?
Tara, I have a question, and I apologize if this is something you covered in your presentation. I believe that the county um through the social studies or social sciences. Branch um is involved in this Seal of Civic Engagement program.
Yeah.
Did you guys talk about that during the presentation?
I had one slide, we, I just talked about our Power of Democracy Initiative. Um, and of course, the Seal of Civic Engagement, and um I discussed how we brought on a new student board member for our board. Um, and um. So just touched on it a little, but uh getting students engaged in the political. Process and their local elections um is something we've been working on at the county offices as well, so. Um.
It's something that it seems that there's an opportunity for some good partnerships between the league. Um, and. The county office is we sort of, you know, in terms of. You, we, we've approached our local schools at times to do um. Enrollment, but uh voter registration for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, and it's hard because the teachers ultimately, you know, they have. Every minute of their instructional time kind of allocated to activities. But it seems that with the Seal of Civic Engagement, which is something that's sort of. More voluntary for the students that. If there's coordinators within the schools and the programs. On that activity, that maybe those folks would inter- be interested in partnering with the leagues and, you know, it's, this isn't this. So specifically Sunnyvale Cupertino, there's leagues throughout the county, that there may be ways. For league members to advise. Students who are, or partner with students who are working towards the Seal of Civic Engagement, I. It, it, this is a very sort of pie in the sky kind of. Um, idea that I'm raising, but it just seems like there's a. There, there, there's sort of two strings out there that could sort of get tied together. Of, we wanna help and they might need help, and if we can somehow link those two, you know, that, those two initiatives up, it might be a, a win-win.
I totally agree, yeah, and I was um just saying, one of our pillars at the county office is partnership, so. I think that's certainly something we should partner on. Um, so we have our civic engagement team at the County Office of Education, so. You know, if it's appropriate, I'd love to just follow up and we can have a discussion on ways we can partner and. Work with students, I think that'd be great, I mean, the, our Power of Democracy campaign, um. Just won the Golden Bell Award from CSBA, you know, it's something we are very proud of, so we'd love to part.
Well, I made a note about that program, Tara. So I could contact you, follow up, because this is, as, as Pam said, this is really. An area that we would like to be able to support the, the County Board of Education and the schools. Uh, cuz I think that we have, we have some resources as well as um talent. That might be uh able to help uh in, in that program, so I am. Pam and I probably, and Roberta will be following up with you on that. Uh, that and the Environmental Literacy Summit.
Yeah, March eighteen.
Uh, could I, um. Talk a little bit about the uh voter registration program, um part of Tara's um. Presentation gave me a, oh, oh boy, yeah, this is what we can do, I know now how. What we can do and we can use um so- some of what she. Um, said, but you know, if, if the three of us wanna stay afterwards for a few minutes, I, I will tell you what my. Brilliant um idea.
Uh-oh. Another project.
Well, I'd like to work with you, you know, I'm a league member, as was mentioned, um and. Definitely a supporter of the work you all do, and you know, civic engagement, student civic engagement is, is, as you saw, a top priority for me, and that's what. Pushed me to join the board, so would be honored to work with you.
Okay, well, if, if, yes, Roberta.
I, I do have another question, um. My kind of vision of what the state, uh, yeah, county board did was they dealt with special ed. Special needs, um. Um, students, is there equity across the county, um, how do you um? Deal with that?
Yeah, and so special education is just one of our programs, right, and um. Certainly, equity is, is something, is, is, is. Something we have across all of our programs, I mean, it's again, one of our four pillars, um, you know, what's been. Especially challenging, and this is something that's happening statewide, is just. Recruitment and retention of paraeducators of, you know, teachers in special education. Um, I think that's been um a focus of our board, and actually, um. I'm working with one of our other trustees to bring an item to our board to sort of strengthen that, um. But uh, you know, it's, it's something that. Just given the profession, it's recruitment and retention has just been. A challenge statewide in special education, but that's certainly that type of workforce issues. Um, is something we're really focused on, on our board.
Okay. Well, if there are no more questions, I think I would like to thank Tara again. This has been, I, I think, a really fantastic educational opportunity for all of us. And I'm so pleased that we have it recorded and we will uh put it on our, the link on our website. Uh, and Pam was gonna help, and I'm sure put that, put, put the recording up on you, on YouTube. Um, so thank you again, Tara, and the best of luck in, in your challenging. Role now, uh, and thanks again.
Thank you so much, yeah, look forward to being in touch.
Okay.